All right, good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Meeting for Tuesday, February 6, 2024. It is 2:02 PM. My name is Tymentheer Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier. To his right is Commissioner Carolina Mejia. We have Commissioner Gary Edwards and Commissioner Emily Klaus, as well as interim County Manager Robin Campbell and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder. We're going to start off today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Mejia.
Will you please join me in the pledge? To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and just as for all. Thank you.
Go to the Vice Chair for land acknowledgement.
Thank you, sir. We would also like to start today with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge and thank the indigenous Salish peoples whose elders and ancestors have lived on and cared for the land and waterways of this county since time immemorial and who still inhabit the area today. Specifically, the Squawksen Island, Nisqually, and Chehalis people are sovereign tribal partners. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. The purpose of this acknowledgement is to disrupt ongoing erasure of injustices done and to remember history of a stepping stone, as a stepping stone towards healing.
Sir, did that weird inflection? Okay, we have a proposed agenda. There have been a couple of changes. Would interim County Manager Campbell step through those for us before we ask for a motion?
Yes, the changes today were to add an item, and the item is 5B, which is the purchase of the Sagewood property for Habitat Conservation Plan land. I believe that that was the only change.
Okay, so with that changed, is there a motion regarding the proposed agenda?
I move to, I move to pass the, I make a motion to pass the agenda as stated.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve today's proposed agenda. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is a section of the meeting for presentations, and I understand we have a presentation from our Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. It is my honor to acknowledge the impact and recognition of one of the teachers within my district, Tenino High School Ag teacher Geraldine Maxfield. She has been named Teacher of the Year by Washington State VFW. Ms. Maxfield has spent her entire teaching career in the Tenino School District, spanning three decades. According to the Tenino School District, she has built an award-winning national FFA program, including the construction of multiple greenhouses, an FFA community garden, and an annual plant sale that brings in visitors from around the Northwest. She has also served as the FFA advisor for her entire tenure, in which she has spent countless hours coaching and mentoring students in agriculture and leadership projects. One of her students is even currently serving as a state FFA officer. Not to age myself, but I actually had the pleasure of having Ms. Maxfield, who was Ms. Potter in my day as a teacher, my very, her very first year of teaching. Her commitment to her community, school, and students is a large part of why she has earned this award, and I want to thank her for her commitment to South Thurston County and our youth. Because while youth may only be 30% of our population, they are 100% of our future. Although she could not be here today, since this meeting is during the school day, I will be presenting this letter of appreciation to her later this month at a school board meeting. Thank you.
All right.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
Okay, next is opportunity for the public to address the board. My guidelines are buried. Board of County Commissioners welcomes comments from the public. There are some guidelines governing such comments to ensure they are appropriate, and the general speaking guidelines are to please introduce yourself, including the area of the county in which you reside. Address board, not audience or staff. Silence your cell phones. Speakers are limited to a total of four minutes to address the board. Meeting attendees cannot donate any of their speaking time to another speaker. No comments that are lewd, offensive, inflammatory, hateful, defamatory, defamatory, or discriminatory in nature. Please be respectful. No outbursts of any kind. Comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion of a for-profit business, are not permitted. All written materials provided to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 4256 RCW. Finally, no remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the board on appeal in a quasi-judicial basis. Thank you for your cooperation. And I'll sign it. Okay, first up is John Pettit.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Pettit. I live off Rich Road at the Deschutes River Ranch. Today, I have a couple different things that I wanted to talk about, but one, while I've already touched base with a particular person, I want to emphasize that I was in, I was in the opportunity of seeing a briefing meeting that was occurring, and it had to do with changes or potential changes to one of the areas Agritourism Overlay District. And I thought there was some good conversation that I saw, but I also, I did one of my things that I wake up in the middle of the night because, having read what I was reading, it didn't match up with my memory, unfortunate photographic memory, of what the code actually says. And when you, as Commissioners, are considering any type of document or change, it would be appropriate that you should have a strikeout copy provided to you, as opposed to just a formulated copy, oh, well, this is what we want you to approve. There is so many more things that are in the existing code that are not even mentioned in, for instance, the Agritourism Overlay District. One of the examples would be like the minimum size is 10 acres. It's not in your code that you're planning on repealing and replacing with one that doesn't even mention that. So there's a whole lot of issues about what needs to be done, but I guess my concern, as much as anything is, as potential decision-makers, you need to have accurate information, and you need to be able to take that information and, and break it down and know what the changes are, because maybe there's things that, well, there are certainly things in this particular, my opinion, this particular issue, that deserves continuation, that would be eliminated because it's not provided for in the new plan of what's being presented. One of the comments I heard, which I think would help in that particular topic, is Mr. Edwards was questioning about certain terminology. What's this mean, or what's that mean? Well, one of the things that most ordinances have, state law, et cetera, is they have definition of terms. When you have a definition, for instance, something that defines what rule theme means, it's no longer a discretionary thought of one person thinks it means one thing and another a different thing. You should be having absolute definitions. The more discretion you take out of the process for staff to deal with issues, the less conflict you're going to have, because it's clear, not somebody's opinion or what they think. So I'm going to suggest that you need to take a look at this. Perhaps the whole issue about the Agritourism Overlay District needs to be reviewed from scratch and even sent back to the Planning Commission. The only other quick thing I'm going to mention is, is personal disappointment. I don't think you guys need less meetings. Right now, your current ordinance requires that every meeting is a regular meeting. When you make consensus decisions, even thumbs up, that by state law entitles the public to have public comment. I think you, we're missing the point on following. The other thing is, is part of the Open Public Meeting Act requires the, a schedule to be actually presented, or a regular schedule for the meetings to occur, not just a random, we'll tell you when. So, that being said, I've run out of time, and I'm looking forward to talking to one of your county managers here in a couple of days to maybe resolve some issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. I had Mr. Powell, but then scratched out. He's not here.
Well, he was here. He was from Veterans, probably.
Right. Well, he must have had to leave because he scratched out his name. I think we have somebody on Zoom, Mr. Nightingale?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Just wanted to very briefly thank Stuart Whitford and his staff for bringing forward item seven, Public Health and Social Services, regarding the contract update here at Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan. I, I spent many years walking, working for various counties and developing and reviewing these kind of plans, and I'm currently serving on your Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so I'm very much looking forward to this and very happy that you guys are going to have the opportunity to say yes to updating the plan. So I encourage you to do so. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Next up, I see, is there anyone else? B. Norton, is that? Mr. and Ms. Norton, would you like to give public comment?
I would just like to ask that the item relating to expanding, doing water systems on the public, let's see, this is, I'm sorry, I'm trying to go through the documents quickly or.
Could you quickly start, ma'am, could you start by stating your, your name and where you reside in the county?
My name is Betsy Norton. I reside in Olympia.
Okay.
I would like to know if the water system being proposed, I would like to know if there's a map of where you're expecting to put in those water systems and who they are for.
Can you tell me which item you're referring to on the agenda?
This is agenda item, let me see.
Eight C?
Eight C, I think, yeah.
Eight C, okay, well, we will, we will, we'll ask that question of staff when we get to that item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse Simmons.
No comment from me, sir. Thank you.
Very good. And I know the rest of the folks are staff. Anyone, oh, Mr. Trowbridge, did you want to give comment? Okay, your turn.
So I'm afraid I've loaded you people up with a lot of materials here today. I'll try to go as quickly as I can. Looking at the first document, that's sort of in rust green, this is the actual map that Mr. Stuart Whitford gave me graciously today, so that I could present it at this hearing. And the issue I want to present here is that quite a few properties were left out. We talked about this last week. You see the one with the big X in it? That one belongs to my wife and me, and the one immediately south, about the same size, does too. The one with the X has waterfront, as you can see, about 500 feet. It was left out. So was the railroad trestle. So were some big properties up here. I labeled one of them number one, and then you see two, three, four, five, are so small you can even hardly see them, but they seem to be left out. Six is the one that notches into our property. Seven, the one down there at the bottom. And then up in the north, eight, nine, 10, and the railroad track is 11, so with the X, that's 12 properties that were left out. Obviously, this was not inadvertent. The story I was given was that we thought we were doing you a favor because you didn't contribute to the problem. You know, you're just raw land that's wild. You didn't contribute to the problem, so that's why we left you out. And when I asked, well, how come no properties were made into conservancy zones, like all the other lakes, all the other lakes have conservancy zones, I was told that Mr. Wilson told them, no, you can't have the conservancy zones. So moving to this, this one now. This was put out by the Department of Ecology. You can see, if you look on the map, and it's a map from the last time that they tried to do this to us. And I just want to show you that there are wetlands. So look, compare these two maps next to each other, and you can see that X is almost all of it was designated as a wetlands on this map, and that the part out into the lake is designated as lily pad wetlands, or something like that, yeah, harvesting conservancy areas. And so that's where all the lily pads are, and then they're up here where the exit stream is, up where properties one, two, three, four, and five in the other map are. That's where they all are. And then they're over here by the trestle, number 11. So that's about what it's like now. That was many years ago, but that's where the lily pads are, and those have all been left out on this map. All the lily pads were left out. But yet, lily pads were the main problem, I thought, because they're so horrible. As I understand what the plan is to do with them is that, since there's two or three species of lily pads mixed together in this mat of lily pads off my wife's property, they have to kill them all. Not just the ones they don't like, but the ones they do like too, because when you spray this awful stuff on lily pads, it kills everything, not just three species, but every species of every plant. So they kill them all, and then they try to encourage the good ones back. Thus contributing to the nitrates problem in our lake. What, what are we talking about? We're dumping a bunch of dead foliage in our lake. So the next thing I'd like you to look at is page ES3 of this book. I've given you the title page of it. Here it is, McAllister Springs Geologically Sensitive Area. Here's the map. Here's the actual map. I couldn't show you a good one last week of where it is. It's this dotted area, south and east of the railroad trestle, which includes Patterson Lake. Doesn't include Long Lake, although you see these arrows going up there. It sure looks like the aquifer flows from Long Lake up to McAllister Springs. Look on the map. Look where McAllister Springs is.
Need you to wrap up, sir. Need you to wrap up. Your, your time is up.
So on here, it says, "All properties are included." It's attested to by all three, Ms. Mensah, Edwards, and Mejia. They attest, that's their verb they use, that all properties are included. And then they say, "See attached map." And which map is it? It's this map. See attached map, all properties are included. Now, I apologize, really, Commissioner, for yelling at you last time about, I think I said you were bought off or you sold out or something. I retract that. I didn't mean it. But this is, this is dishonest. All properties are included. See attached map, and a bunch were left out. Thank you.
Anyone else who has not had an opportunity to provide public comment who wished to, on Zoom or in the room? Okay, very good. We will move on to County Managers' Update.
The only update I have this afternoon is to once again announce the new board schedule where these afternoon Board Accounting Commissioner meetings will be held on the, every other Tuesday afternoon instead of every Tuesday. So there will be no meeting next week, no Board of County Commissioners business meeting next Tuesday afternoon, to be specific. There will be agenda setting in the morning, and there will be a Board of Health meeting next week in the afternoon. So the new schedule continues to roll out.
Thank you. Any questions for the interim County Manager? No. Okay, we have four proposed consent items. Is there any requests from a board member to pull an item from the consent agenda? None. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve consent items 3A through 3D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items 3A through 3D are approved. That brings us to item four, which is Commissioners' Department Resolution to Update Membership and Charter of Thurston County Law and Justice Council. Leah Landon, our Criminal Justice Regional Program Manager, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leah Landon, Thurston County Criminal Justice Regional Program Manager. It's never not a mouthful. Before you today is a resolution to update the Thurston County Law and Justice Council's charter. As a reminder, in 1987, the Washington State Legislature gave all counties the authority to create a Law and Justice Council. Within Thurston County, the purpose of that council is to provide an interjurisdictional forum for consideration of initiatives and resources to improve criminal justice services, enhance public safety and fairness, and reduce crime throughout Thurston County. In this updated version of our charter, we are requesting the addition of the membership of three different entities. So that includes a representative from the Squawksen Island Tribe, a representative from the Thurston County Racial Equity Council, and the Thurston County Criminal Justice Regional Program Manager. And again, this was voted on by the Thurston County Law and Justice Council and approved unanimously that we add these positions to our voting membership. In addition, this charter creates a term limit for our two representatives from community-based organizations. That term limit will now be set at three years. Prior to this version of the charter, those entities did not have a term limit, and so the two individuals that have been serving have now served over three years. So this is just to align with our other county boards and commissions. With that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
How are you, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will those terms be staggered?
That is actually not a conversation we had. We could stagger them if that is the preference of the board. When they were originally created, they started at the exact same time, so.
I was just curious, do they, will their clock start again, or do, or is, they said they've been there three years, so will they need to reapply now, or how are you going to do that?
Yes, the conversation we had was that after this charter were to be approved, we would reopen applications and give the opportunity for new people to apply. If the people who have been serving are interested in continuing to serve, they are welcome to apply again.
Any other question?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution updating the charter and membership of the Law and Justice Council.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve the resolution updating charter for Law and Justice Council. Any discussion?
I think this is good.
Thank you.
Yeah, me too. Thank you for all the work that's gone into this. I'm super excited to be part of Law and Justice Council now. I only attended one meeting so far, but I really liked what I saw, so I'm excited about the new charter.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, then I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is 5A, Community Planning and Economic Development, Interagency Agreement between Washington State University and Thurston County. And who is presenting? Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rob Gelder, Assistant County Manager. I'll handle this item on behalf of Director Cummings. The board had a bigger discussion earlier today during agenda review, but just as a reminder, the purpose of this agreement is to formalize the annual relationship between WSU, WSU, and Thurston County for 2024, to continue to provide services to the residents of Thurston County. The amount of $172,715 was approved in our current 2024 WSU extension budget, and this also continues the joint funding relationship for county area, area extension facility and designated support staff. So that is the agreement before the board.
Questions for Assistant County Manager? Nope. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the interagency agreement between Thurston County and Washington State University for a total of $172,715 for the period of January 1, 2024, through December 31, 2024, and authorize the Chair of the Board of the County Commissioners to sign the agreement and the County Manager to execute any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve this interagency agreement. Any discussion?
I will say that I commend Stephen for, you know, just the partnership he's had with the county. I'm really excited about having Thurston County buckwheat for our pancake breakfast. So anyone who's interested in having local pancakes, please join us at the fairgrounds this year.
I just want to say aye too. I'm a big supporter of this program. And, you know, we, we heard earlier from Mr. Bramwell, and I think with our investment, it brings in, what did he say, an additional $1.2 million in grant funds in, in, in creating programming, and so I'm all for it. Go Cougs.
I had to make sure that the buckwheat was satisfactory before I could approve it for the pancake breakfast, so I did that last weekend, and it's going to be really a good upgrade to our pancake breakfast this year.
I, I guess I'll just point out that a lot of times we do not have in-depth discussion at this point in our deliberations, but rest assured, we've had quite a few discussions leading up to this topic and prior to it getting on this agenda. Just want the public to know that, that we're, we're not rushing through anything. Thank you.
Motion's been made in seconded. I'm going to call for the vote. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, next up is 5B, another Community Planning and Economic Development item. This was added from this morning's meeting relating to purchase of UCP Sagewood LLC parcel for Habitat Conservation Plan mitigation. Andrew Defovis, Senior Planner from CPED, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Andrew Defovis, Senior Planner with Community Planning. The board has previously given authorization to county staff to pursue real estate acquisitions that are related to the county's Habitat Conservation Plan. to pursue real estate acquisitions that are related to the county's Habitat Conservation Plan, or HCP. I'm here today to request authorization to proceed with a specific real estate opportunity for the HCP. This property in question is 25 acres and is located three miles south of the Olympia Airport. It's currently owned by UCP Sagewood LLC, and the address is 10325 Tilly Road South. A few years back, the landowners approached the county to see if there was interest in purchasing the property for the county's Habitat Conservation Plan. The county at that time performed a baseline assessment of the site. The property is primarily comprised of wetlands and is occupied by Oregon Spotted Frogs, which are a federally listed species that is covered under the county's HCP. Pursuant to the HCP, the property presents an opportunity to preserve Oregon Spotted Frog habitat and generate credits which can be purchased by those whose development activities have an impact on Oregon Spotted Frog elsewhere in the county. County staff received authorization to perform an appraisal and make an offer on the property in 2021, and the county entered into a purchase and sale agreement the following year. The total cost of the property, per the most recent settlement statement, is 315,000 315,080 and 70 cents. The purchase would be funded by Conservation Futures, specifically from the funds which the board has set aside for such HCP-related purchases. This transaction is ready to close, and with the board's direction, county staff will route the appropriate closing documents to the interim county manager for signature and proceed to deposit funds in escrow. So that concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for? No. Okay, is there a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of the UCP Sagewood LLC Parcel APN 12727210200 in an amount not to exceed 315,500,000 and authorize the interim county manager to sign related closing documents in order to facilitate future development by establishing Oregon Spotted Frog credits pursuant to the Thurston County Habitat Conservation Plan.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve this purchase. Any discussion? Commissioner Klaus?
Just clarification on the dollar amount. 315,500,000 is what we said.
315,500,000?
I would just say that when I joined this board in 2019, I I just wondered if we'd ever get to this day where we're not hearing, you know, difficult stories from citizens that couldn't, you know, proceed on their project, but rather just acquiring land for conservation, protection of species, acquiring credits that'll allow projects to go forward. I mean, I'm so happy to be at this juncture where this is the kind of HCP-related items that we're that we're dealing with. This is the good stuff that we took us so long to get to, so thank you. All right. Motion's been made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, six A, Emergency Services. Contract for fiscal, federal fiscal year 23 Homeland Security Grant Number E24126. Ben Miller Todd, Emergency Services Director, to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Ben Miller Todd, Director of Emergency Services. The federal fiscal year 2023 Homeland Security Grant Program provides funding for preventing, protecting against, mitigating, responding to, and recovering from acts of terrorism and other threats. This grant provides guarantees with the resources required for implementation of the National Preparedness System and working toward the National Preparedness Goal of a secure and resilient nation. Thurston County Emergency Management is a coordinating agency for Homeland Security Region Three, which includes counties, cities, and tribes in Grays Harbor, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Thurston Counties. The Homeland Security Grant Program Agreement with the Washington State Military Department is for 278,394 in federal pass-through through funding to support Homeland Security Region Three activities. There is no local match required. This funding will reimburse eligible expenses for planning, organizing, equipping, training, and exercising activities throughout Homeland Security Region Three incurred during the period of September 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2025. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Move to approve the federal fiscal year 2023 Homeland Security Grant FFY23HSGP Number E24-126 for the period of September 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2025 for a total of 278,394 and to authorize the Director of Emergency Services to sign the agreement and any amendments that do not exceed 10%.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this contract for the Homeland Security Grant. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
unanimously passes. Thank you, Ben. Okay, seven A, Public Health and Social Services. Contract award for Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan update. Stuart Whitford, Environmental Health Program Manager, to brief the board on this contract.
Thank you, Commissioners. So on November 21st, you approved a request for proposals to go forward to hire a consultant to update our Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan, which has not been updated since 2014. So we have now completed that process. So we are asking you to award the contract of for updating this plan to HDR Incorporated of Seattle, Washington, for a total of 83,126 and to authorize the Director of Public Health to begin contract negotiations. And I'll just describe a little bit for the public. So on January 11th, 2023, one proposal was received from HDR of Seattle in response to our RFP. It was advertised in Olympian and posted to Thurston County RFP webpage. They were the only consultant that responded to the RFP. Their their proposal was complete and met all of our criteria, and it was within budget. So the total funding for this project is 100,000 dollars, with 75,000 of that coming from a Department of Ecology grant that was awarded to us, and the remaining 25,000 comes from Public Works tipping fees. So we hope you support us moving forward with the contract with HDR.
Any questions for Stuart? About the item? Okay, is there a motion?
I move to award the contract of the updating of Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan to HDR Inc. of Seattle, Washington, for a total of 83,126 and to authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to begin contract negotiations.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract award for the Hazardous Waste Management Plan. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is eight A, Public Works. Interlocal agreement with City of Lacey for Marvin Road Phase One, 22nd Avenue to Union Mills Road Project, CP 61478. Ben Enfield, Senior Civil Engineer from our Public Works Department, here to brief the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Ben Enfield, Senior Civil Engineer with Thurston County Public Works. Public Works is requesting the Board of County Commissioners execute the interlocal agreement with City of Lacey prepared for the Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One project. This project is from 22nd Avenue to Union Mills, Capital Project Number 61478. The city of Lacey owns water and sanitary sewer mains and distribution infrastructure in the Marvin Road right-of-way within the project limits. The city desires to modify and improve portions of their public utilities within the project. This interlocal agreement is proposed as it is more efficient for both Thurston County and City of Lacey to design, permit, bid, and construct the project to include the City of Lacey utility work as part of the county project. The agreement provides for collaboration between the city and Thurston County for inclusion of city-prepared documents in the overall Thurston County construction project. The City of Lacey will be responsible for all costs associated with the contracted water and sanitary sewer work and has provided design, permitting, and bid documents for inclusion in the bid package. The interlocal agreement has been approved by the city. And thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Is there a motion?
I move to execute the interlocal agreement with the City of Lacey for water main and sanitary sewer main infrastructure improvements as part of the Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One. Project CP Number 61478.
Second.
Okay, a motion made and seconded to approve this interlocal agreement with the City of Lacey on the Marvin Road Upgrade project. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Don't go anywhere, and you're not. So we've got eight B, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One. So with same project, back to you, Ben, just to kind of tell us what this one's about.
Yeah. So we're requesting permission for the, from the board, for the, to authorize the county engineer to publicly advertise, set a bid date, and receive and open sealed bids for a contract to construct the Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One Improvement Project. This is also Capital Project 61478. This project is along Marvin Road from 22nd Avenue to Union Mills Road. Improvements include a roundabout at the intersection of Marvin Road and 19th Avenue, the addition of curbs, pedestrian curb ramps, and shared-use pedestrian and bicycle paths on both sides of Marvin Road. The improvements will increase safety along the corridor for both vehicle traffic and foot traffic by slowing down vehicles, decreasing impact points, providing safe locations for pedestrian crossing, and improving lighting. The total estimated construction cost is approximately 8,385,000. Public Works received funding of 2.621 million from transportation impact fees and developer fees and 3.75 million from Washington State Transportation Improvement Board funding. The City of Lacey will pay for all water and sewer construction at a contribution of approximately 1.693 million, and the remaining funding of 0.321 million is funded through the County Road Fund.
All right, we're right. This is the project where one side of the street's your district and one side of the street's your district? It's pretty cool. All right. So is there any, is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution calling for sealed bids and authorize the county engineer to set the bid date and time for receipt and opening of said bids for the Marvin Road Upgrade Phase One, Project CP Number 61478.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids on this project. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I hope this solves a lot of the problems for the folks over there. And it sounds like it will.
It will, yeah. The roundabout will be right there at the entrance to Laurel Hooks.
Very good. I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Finally, for the business section of the meeting, we have eight C, another Public Works item. To set a public hearing to consider application of Public Utility District Number One of Thurston County for a non-exclusive franchise for a water system within Thurston County rights-of-way. Craig Sisson, Real Estate Services Manager for Public Works, is here. Craig, I don't know if you heard the public comment. There was a question about what systems this applies to, and maybe you could answer that if you could.
Absolutely. Craig Sisson, Real Estate Services Manager, Thurston County Public Works. This franchise is for Thurston PUD Number One, which does have a number of water systems throughout the county. As far as those areas impacted, they do have a service map on their website that shows all the PUD water systems. There are a number of them scattered throughout the county. So it it's hard to pin down exactly which streets, which right-of-ways without going into a larger discussion. So there is a map on the Thurston PUD's website.
Okay. Can you give any, I mean, other background about what this item's actually doing?
Absolutely. RCW 3655040 requires a public hearing be held on the franchise applications. Public Utility District Number One of Thurston County, also known as Thurston PUD Number One, has applied for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a water distribution system within Thurston County rights-of-way. The affected rights-of-way are within the legal boundaries of Thurston County, excluding those areas located within the incorporated areas of cities and towns, including but not limited to Olympia, Lacey, Tomwater, Yelm, Tenino, Rainier, and Bukota. In accordance with RCW 3655040, notice will be published twice in the official county newspaper and posted in three public places in the county seat. The non-exclusive franchise process for a water system is consistent with the county's strategic plan and is in alignment with Initiative Number Six to proactively shape a strong, diverse economy that provides equitable access to opportunity.
Commissioner Edwards, I thought I saw your hand.
I think maybe the party in that made comment earlier in this meeting may have thought this was gonna be an exclusive area. And Craig, this is kind of a large area having to do with a long-term contract that has been in place and we're just renewing, right? So nothing is going to change, and when they need to dig in a, any road right-of-way, they have some authority to do so. Is that about it?
That 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 is. There are still permits that are required, but this gives them the legal right to be within the right-of-way that Thurston County has. It is a replacement contract. They did have a franchise. This is a, this is a replacement franchise for that. And this agenda item is to set the public hearing for that franchise, which is required by RCW 3655.
And other than renewing the contract or creating a new contract, in this case, nothing is going to change than what's been going on. Is that right?
Correct. The Thurston PUD does have the option to expand and increase water systems. I don't know if they have that plan, but this is to cover what they have within the right-of-way right now and any future expansion that they have to go through their normal process in order to do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move to set a public hearing on March 5th, 2024 at 3:30 PM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard in Room 110 of the atrium, 3,000 Pacific Avenue Southeast to consider the application of Public Utility District Number One of Thurston County for a non-exclusive franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a water system within Thurston County rights-of-way.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to set this public hearing for March 5th, 2024 at 3:30. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We'll have that public hearing on March 5th at 3:30. Takes us to standing items. Commissioner report on board work sessions, assigned committee meetings, or community updates. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Edwards.
Mine is gonna be extremely short. I'm not gonna give any committee reports because there's nothing of substantial change or notice that needs to be given. And most of my time had been used up on land use issues and permitting. Not at all. Just keep it at that generic point. Thank you.
Commissioner Klaus?
I also did not have any committee updates. Over the last week, I met with Auditor Hall just to kind of get a better understanding of what goes on in the auditor's office. That was a really helpful meeting. I had a meeting with Senator Murray's Regional Rep, Daniel Palethorpe, to learn more about Senator Murray's goals for the year. And I also participated in a ride-along with Sheriff Sanders on Friday. That was very informative. I think the ride-along lasted about five hours. So we were out for quite a while, and it was good for me to kind of see another perspective since public safety is something I care a lot about, and I'll be using that experience to inform a lot of the discussions that we have around public safety. Let's see. I also just wanted to give a quick update on what's been happening around the Desmond Drive encampment, and I won't go into as much detail as I did last week. I'll just say that there has been some activity out there at the camp on behalf of DES employees who have been clearing some of the trees and a lot of brush that kind of protects the residents of the camp from being seen by the public. And along with other things, there have been some reasons why folks who are out there have left, so there are not very many people out there. And I'll just say, again, I'm disappointed with how this happened. This is one of the smaller encampments in our county, and it was a good opportunity for regional collaboration to ensure that this was done smoothly and that we could get some people into stable housing, but now there are more community members that have been displaced. So I'm looking forward to finding ways to improve things like this in the future, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mahia?
Since yesterday?
Well, this is more for the public's benefit. We've heard.
Well, I guess for the public's benefit, I do post my schedule online if you want to see what I've been up to and who I've been meeting with. Other than that, since yesterday, just attended the Port's meet and greet with their candidates for their executive directors and heard from them. And I'll leave it at that.
Hi, it's my turn. Hi. I was gonna mention this earlier. We kind of ran out of time. I had a, it was brief. I had a, it was brief, but it was a conversation with the Lacey Mayor and the Lacey City Manager, and they'd kind of heard that we'd been talking about islands within Lacey, and that there's kind of, I don't know, they, they were, they weren't sure where, where it was coming from that they didn't want to have a conversation. And, you know, I told them, you know, I was like, well, it's, you know, there's kind of, maybe it's a myth, maybe it's a misunderstanding, but, you know, we're kind of under the assumption that that Lacey has had, has been a difficult one to talk to about islands within Lacey, and they said that they come from a place where that is not at all the case. They want to open up discussions about Thurston County Islands within Incorporated Lacey, and they're very eager to do so with us, and they would, they would love for us to reach out and start having that conversation.
Thank you for that. I, at the meeting yesterday, or at the meet and greet, uh, Rick Wa came, uh, came up to me and, and told me that he would want to have a conversation, and I told him that anytime he would have, want to have a conversation about Tanglewild, I was open ears and would love to have that conversation, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, for me, it was, I couldn't quite understand where he was coming from because I didn't know about your conversation, but I, I was just telling him that it was just that we had been, it was the opposite kind of, it's like we'd been working so well together in addressing islands and always talking about it, that we were just a little surprised by this new proposal, which created an island. So we were just trying to make sure that that wasn't inconsistent with the recent pattern of cooperation that we've had with Lacey, which I think's been pretty good over the last five years that I've been here, dealing with annexation. And we partnered on a bill before the legislature, and we created a policy, and everything's been going good. And I, like I say, we worked that one particular one out, but that initial meeting, we just needed some more information to know if this was, I didn't want to be acting, you know, contrary to what we've been trying to work, work towards, so. But, yeah, he wanted to talk up to me. He said he wanted, would like to talk to us about that, as well as, I think, Commissioner Klaus's issues on Desmond. So we wanted, maybe there's a good chance to coordinate with Lacey leadership on, on those two. Okay. Is that good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. Since yesterday, folks, probably, probably more public watching today than yesterday. I, I'll just tick through some of the things I, I hit, which was that I attended, I did attend the Ports Executive Director presentations, that was good. Attended a presentation by W D F W on their hat, their wildlife corridors. They're trying to do, you know, freeway overpasses and underpasses and getting connectivity, it's called habitat connectivity, and the I five is going to be a real challenge, and Thurston County may play a part in helping to create wildlife habitat corridors from the Olympics to the Cascades. That, there's a feasibility study coming out in May, and I have a, and there's a F, an employee with Conservation Northwest that's kind of putting things together, and I have a meeting with him. I saw it in my schedule coming up, so I'll get more detailed for, on that. Attended that multi-care listening session, went to the W A S A C legislative reception. A lot of my time's been dealing with D N R in one capacity or another. We had discussions more about Summit Lake. We had discussions about some of the mature forest pieces. We finally, I learned today how to win on one of our parcels that we were trying to advocate for, Cabbage Patch. The Board of Natural Resources, based on the input that we had given at the last meeting, somebody made a motion to just take Thurston County's two chunks of Cabbage Patch off, and that passed with all but one vote. So we don't need to think more anymore about reconvenance or, or anything there. So that's kind of our first successful effort to, to save some of our mature forests in this county, so I'm really excited about that. Another thing came up.
First of many.
There's, another thing came up with another person I met from D N R who wanted to know, and I'm going to look towards staff on this. Apparently, we signed something that's in support of increasing wooded bays, like Conservation Area Designation. I only vaguely really remember it, honestly, but she wanted to know who she could talk to in our staff about following up further about conservation opportunities or plans or, or just more specifics about that, wooded bay and D N R and the conservation area. I couldn't really come up with who would be a good point person on Thurston County's side.
So I'm drawing a blank on that, but we'll figure it out and
Okay.
get a reference.
So there was that, and then, yeah, we had meeting, Commissioner Fornier and I met with the Shalas Tribe about our docket process, giving them heads up as to how to provide input, and had a meeting with the representatives from the Olympian about coverage, media coverage of Thurston County and the Olympian. Gave some feedback on that. With that, we will go to county manager to review our combined schedule.
For your upcoming week, this afternoon at three thirty, you'll hold a public hearing on the A dash two-five Forest Land Conversion Code Update. Tomorrow, Wednesday, February seventh, at your morning work session, which is scheduled from nine till noon, the topics include the legislative update, bond counsel and bond advisors. Will come and do informational session, or Bonds one oh one for the board, and you will have a briefing on the L TAC Lodging Tax Advisory Committee on the proposals on how to distribute the L TAC funds. At your afternoon work session on Wednesday, beginning at two o'clock, the items currently scheduled for that work session is a presentation by Lot on the state of the utility. Nothing on your joint calendars on Thursday or Friday this week. Then continuing into next week, on Monday, February twelfth, at your morning work session beginning at ten A M, the topics currently scheduled are related to public safety sales tax. And then at your afternoon on Monday at two o'clock is Commissioner check-in, which will include any decisions pending at that time. On Tuesday, February thirteenth, nine to eleven is agenda setting. At eleven A M on Tuesday, you have your monthly meeting with Board of County Commissioners and appointed directors. At two o'clock on Tu- not two o'clock, one o'clock on Tuesday, is one-on-one meetings with elected officials. And next week, that will include the auditor, district court, and the treasurer. And then at three forty-five next Tuesday, you will join the other members for the Board of Health for their monthly meeting. On Wednesday, February fourteenth, there is a, uh, at your morning Wednesday work session beginning at nine A M, the legislative update. And then also on your morning work session, you will begin reviewing proposals for your preliminary dockets. And at the afternoon work session next Wednesday, February fourteenth, we currently don't have any topics on the agenda for that day, but we may by the time the day comes. So that's the next two weeks.
Questions for interim county manager? The scheduled items?
No questions. I will try to make as many meetings on next Monday and Tuesday as I possibly can via Zoom.
And then on Wednesday, I will not make any meetings because I'll be flying to Austin for wastewater treatment. Okay, then we are adjourned until three thirty, where we'll pick up with the public hearing on the forest conversion ordinance. Thank you.